Good evening. My name is Sridhar Chitur and I'm the President of the City School District of Albany Board of Education. On behalf of the Board, I welcome you to our meeting. Today we have all our Board members, Mr. Almenyavi, Ms. Smith, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Krejci, Ms. Savage, and Ms. Damris Mann joining us along with Supin and Hawkrater and members of the Cabinet. This meeting is being livestreamed and the instructions to view the meeting as well as the link to the agenda, including all the documents we'll discuss are available at albanyschools.org/boe. This is a good time for me to know that if you're here tonight to speak in public comment, you should sign up with Ms. Timmons here to my right. I don't see anybody in the audience today, so we other than one comment that came to us by mail, I don't expect any new ones. With that introduction, we invite those of you who choose to join us as we pledge -- we stand for the Pledge of Legions.
(Pledge of Legions) United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
In addition to the Pledge of Legions, we always focus a meeting by restating the mission of the City School District of Albany, which is to work in partnership with our diverse community to engage every learner in a robust educational program designed to provide the knowledge and skills necessary for success. Supin and Hawkrater, do you have a report for us?
We do not tonight. We will save it for the 27th.
So, like, as I mentioned, this is a time we set aside to hear from members of the public. While there's no in-person public comments here, we do invite members of the public to share thoughts on the decisions we are facing. We accept public comment in person by voicemail and through web-based form, and information about public comment and contract information and contact information is on the district website at albanyschools.org/boe. And today we have one public comment that came to us by mail. This letter is from Miriam Tell. She says, "As a Jewish parent, I'm saddened to hear that Jewish students are experienced bullying in our schools. Education about the dangerous stereotypes out there about Jews would be useful. However, I stand unequivocally against conflating criticism of Israel and antisemitism. They are two entirely different things, and to say otherwise is offensive to the deeply Jewish principles of justice, introspection, and open debate. It also leaves Jewish students who have criticisms of Israel, of whom there are many, victimized again from another direction. Please do not try to correct a wrong by generating another one, and carefully vet any training material you accept to make sure that it does not do so." Thank you. Once again, we appreciate all public comments. We find hearing from public community members very valuable. Our contact information for both public comment and routine correspondence is albanyschools.org/boe. We now move to the part of our meeting we call routine consent. During this portion of the meeting, we approve routine matters for the district. These include items like contracts, field trips, personnel matters, and the like. Each Board member reviews each item carefully, but we vote on them as a group with no discussion. This allows us to use our meeting time more efficiently. Nonetheless, each Board member has the option to set aside any routine consent item in order to require a separate discussion and vote on that item. With that introduction, I now entertain a motion to adopt the routine consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Wilson. Any set asides? Ms. Krejci?
Yes, I'd like to set aside a different outcome.
Different outcome. That's number 11, different outcome. All in favor of adopting routine consent agenda except item 11, different outcome. Ms. Mann? Okay. Ms. Krejci?
Sure, I had concerns--
No, I mean, everything except, okay. That's unanimous? Okay, let's move on to number 11, different outcome. Motion. Ms. Krejci, Ms. Savage, second. Discussion.
So, I had some concerns about this program last time, and while I did receive, actually the Board received a memo from Ms. Brown on the program, I had some additional follow-up questions that I directed to District Council. I have not heard back on last Thursday when I got the memo from Ms. Brown. I have not heard back, so I would like to table this until we hear back from Council. Thank you.
Paul, do you have anything to add?
Well, only that at this point I haven't received or had the opportunity to view the memorandum that was provided by Assistant Superintendent Brown, and I believe that the legal guidance would go hand in hand with what's provided in that memo. Obviously, there are, there's a requirement that we provide equal opportunities for all of our students in the district with respect to our programming. There are some well-settled exceptions with respect to that based upon a demonstration of need and the requirement that that need be addressed in an even-handed manner. However, without, you know, knowing about what's in the memo, I can't really address the legalities of that even-handedness of the approach. I've never received or heard of concerns in the district other than those shared by Board Member Krejci at this point with respect to these types of programs or whether or not that those programs are being done even-handedly. However, I've got to say that it's not my role as legal counsel to be evaluating those programs, the breadth of them, what we're doing across the spectrum of all of our programming for all of our students.
Ms. Wilson?
Just something I've seen, I've observed other places. I'm curious if it could be a solution here. Some things that were traditionally targeted to women, like, for example, like a financial thing for women have now shifted to saying women plus. So I'm just curious if that's something that could address this instance and others potentially. I know it naturally would have to be reviewed if it's something that's unprecedented, but I'm just curious if that could help or things of that nature.
So, with respect to specific programming, it very well could, assuming, of course, it's a voluntary program. However, it doesn't necessarily need to have that type of language in order to be appropriate and to pass muster under the law if equal opportunities are being provided across genders and across different diverse groups across the course of your entire programming. So just because there is a specific program that might address the needs of 10 boys with respect to a particular thing, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's unlawful to approve such an agreement because it only addresses boys if somewhere else within the district there's another program that provides a similar type of opportunity to 10 females, for example.
Ms. Krejci, and then Ms. Savage.
So, I did forward the attachments to you a second time, but in the text of the email, one of the things I had asked is whether we were doing those semi-annual compliance reviews of our single-sex programs to ensure that they are being done in accordance with all requirements. I did also ask about equivalent programs because my understanding is they have to be substantially equivalent programs and available to the same kids, not like a different program for girls at a different elementary school. And part of the memo from Ms. Brown said, "Well, we have a summer program for STEM for girls, but this is a program that involves weekly tutoring and multiple field trips to the boys." So I have concerns. I'm not comfortable. Part of the email to Mr. O'Loy did also ask about my concerns, that does this align with State Division of Human Rights policies? So barring more certain affirmation that this is in accordance with federal and especially state policies, I wouldn't be comfortable voting in this and would like to table it. Thank you.
Ms. Savage?
So, I feel uncomfortable about having a discussion at this level of detail without a memo from Council. I am disappointed that we don't have that. I do remember that the attachments did get forwarded, so I would have loved to have had that tonight, but since we don't have it, our next Board meeting feels like it's far in the distance because it's not till the 27th. But in between there, there's this thing we call February break, so that's really only like seven school days from now. So I'm wondering, Mr. O'Loy, what the time framing is you would need to review the materials provided, have the conversation you need to have with Ms. Brown, and provide us with the information we need in order to understand the legal ramifications of this decision and whether that could be done timely for us to vote on this on the 27th, which I realize is not the preference. I would rather have it voted on today, but I really don't think it's appropriate to be doing this verbally without proper memo from Council.
So I don't believe I ever received the memo that you're referencing with respect to what was provided from a background standpoint from Assistant Superintendent Brown. What I recall receiving was a copy of the contract, which I had already reviewed, a copy of some OCR guidance with respect to that, and a copy of, I believe it was the New York State Division of Human Rights or the Education Law or Division of Human Rights Law with respect to what laws might apply. Ultimately, once I do see that memo, I will be able to opine with respect to this particular contract fairly quickly, so I believe by the next Board meeting--
Wonderful. We'll make sure you have that before the end of the next five minutes so that you've got it in your email, and I apologize if it didn't get to you through some administrative error. But now that you have it, it sounds like that we can table this till the 27th, and we would be able to have your opinions by then? That feels competent? And Ms. Brown, is there, is that okay in terms of the pedagogy for this contract?
That's fine, and I'll touch base with Mr. O'Loy if there's any additional information that's needed.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I just wondered, Ms. Brown, if you could just, in the meantime, are, can we be, is it clear that students, whether it's these 10 or others, are getting the tutoring, mentoring that they need in some other, through some other means? And were there any plans for them to, these students, to have any support during the break? So just wanted to make sure there was nothing that was going to be a barrier?
So I don't have that specific information from Ms. Gaines or her team, but I believe we are waiting on the contract before program begins for these identified young men.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Because I think Ms. Smith's question is an excellent one. We have lots of tutoring and AIS and other kinds of supports. I assume that these students were not withholding our normal level of support from these students. They are receiving those additional supports, just not through this particular program, am I understanding?
We would absolutely be providing them if they needed that academic support through other avenues.
And that's what I, that's what I was asking and wanted to make sure of.
Wouldn't it be okay to ask a follow-up question from Ms. Brown about something in her memo that's not a legal question, but it's a question about the program? So one of, one of the things in your memo was about specifically students in special education. Is this program targeted towards students in special education or students on Tier Two or Three PBIS?
So I can't speak specifically if they are tiered students, but when it comes to some of the SEL needs of the particular identified students, there's a number of different factors that the team has looked at to identify the young men who are going to benefit from this program.
What about special education? Are these, are these, or some of them in special education?
Some of them maybe. I don't have the specifics around what students might be.
Ms. O'Loy?
Oh, I just wanted to note that I stand corrected, that I did receive a copy of the memo.
Thank you for saving me the forwarding aspect that I was trying to do at the same time. So I believe there was a motion on the floor to table.
Is it a second? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Motion passes. Oh. No. Motion passes. Okay, sorry, sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any, any against and abstentions? Okay. So motion passes. It'll be tabled to 27th and hoping that doesn't prevent students from getting the help they need. And hopefully, we can have the information for the next time. Any Board Committee reports? Okay.
Sure. You want me to go ahead?
Sure.
Sure. So just wanted to let folks know that the Ad Hoc Committee on Exhibition of Students' Board Representative, it's a long title, that we will be meeting with students during the very, the four lunch periods at the high school to sort of get some feedback and information from them. And the week before this, was it last week or two weeks ago, we also had a meeting with the SGA, which was very productive and got a lot of feedback from students there. And so anyway, we're moving along on that and continuing to get information out. And I have heard from a couple of you that you had school visits and you had been in a conversation with the school principals around this particular activity, a goal to have a student board rep. And so I haven't heard yet how those have gone, but I'm delighted that that's happening and some next things will evolve after this week.
Yeah, in fact, today I had a meeting at Montessori and I explained what we were doing and what our goal was and how we want to make sure that the student voice includes elementary and middle school, rising up through that high school representative to the Board. And so I forwarded the NISBA article to them and asked them to keep their eyes open for the survey that should be coming to them and get that input.
Great, thank you. And I, I'll just, before, the Facilities Committee meets tomorrow here at HG at 5:45. And so we have a pretty heavy agenda, but it's all around the completion of various projects, capital projects that we have going on, so, and we're coming to the end of most of those. So anyway, tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Krejci?
I just want to say the Policy Committee is meeting this Wednesday here at 5:30, and I did want to say we're already getting positive student feedback about the communication that went out to students, encouraging them to participate in that, so thank you. Was that some, was that something that was done in conjunction with student government?
The power lunches?
Yeah.
So it was, they know about it because we were prepared, but it was something that we talked about with Principal Commerford and the SGA advisor, faculty advisor, Ms. DeRosa, and we said to those students during the SGA meeting that we, this is what we wanted to do. And then it was through the Communications Department, Ms. Ashley, I'm not going to get her last name correct, our new person there at the high school communications person, did craft, took the information that I provided and crafted a flyer, so that was posted up now throughout the building. And we'll see how many students come. And we're going to each take some role in sharing with students what it, about, you know, what a board, school board does, and also, more importantly, the importance of their voice in shaping educational policies and decisions, so.
That's really, that's really exciting, and it's nice to see this playing out. Thanks.
Government Relations?
So Government Relations, the next major topic in the Government Relations agenda is the Council Big Five Schools Lobby Day, which is coming, Lobby Multiple Days, Lobby Days, comes up Tuesday, the 25th and 26th of February. So thank you, President Chitur, for running herd on trying to get everybody signed up in RSVP for that. I appreciate your taking that on. So we will have more to report once we've sat with them. Their priorities almost always align almost perfectly with ours because the demographic need and fiscal challenges of the Big Five and our plus-three districts are similar despite the fairly substantial difference in the way the school districts are structured. And I will also move on just to talk about school visits. Of our 18 school visits, close enough to updated, we have two complete already, four scheduled, and the remainder are kind of split between we're waiting to hear back from the principal and we're waiting to hear back from a board member. So if you have not checked your district mail recently, could you please check your district mail and make sure to get back to principals about possible dates? And I will nudge people individually so that you don't feel like I'm the teacher saying, "Everybody in the class stop talking," when really it's only one person talking. But I do have that list and I will share that with you guys. So we're making progress, and I fully expect every school will have had the opportunity to show off all the wonderful things that they're doing to at least one board member between now and the end of March.
So one quick question. Is there any generalized format in which you expect a report back?
No. Ms. Smith and I were working on that some time ago, and we did drop that ball, so we probably should pick that ball back up again and look, because we would like to get some report out, but we want to make sure that we're doing it in the spirit in which these visits are intended. So that would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Ms. Smith?
Sure. And thank you, Ms. Savage, for that. I think, happy to, I don't know, follow-up work with you on that still if that's desired. Back on the student board rep policy, I just wanted to make sure, I don't know, while we're still waiting on some data, I think we do have some information right now that could be forwarded to the Policy Committee, so I'm just wanting a nudge, nod, nod, to indicate that that's okay to try to put some of that together for you all. That's one question. Go ahead.
Oh, yes, please, not for this Wednesday, but for March, yes, absolutely. That we will be really excited to see it. Thanks.
Okay, you got it. And, oh my gosh, I had one more related to that. Ms. Mann wants to say something while I try to remember what I was thinking.
I was just going to say that the Audit Committee is not going to meet again until April the 21st.
Going once, going twice?
That's quite all right. It'll come-- No, I don't think it was the NISBA article, but I do think it's important for people, I think I did shift it around. There's the NISBA guidance came out, so we have the article--
The policy.
The policy, their policy suggestion. So that's what I wanted to make sure Ms. Krejci has. The other thing is within teams, there is a lot of information there, you know, and I'll just, I'll give you links to everything, but, you know, including conversations and have, or videos that have been done with other student reps, including the student rep in Schenectady. So that's probably the district most, most, you know, like ours. The other one is Buffalo, that's much bigger, and they are able to do some things. And the reason that their policies, that they've already got it persons is because they've already had a policy in place prior to this legal requirement so they could proceed. But we're, I think the law is pretty clear, even though we've been pushing Council a little bit. Not you, Paul, but Shannon. And, and so, but I think that there's really sufficient information where the committee, Policy Committee could get started, so I want to make sure that that's out. But there are some, for everybody, you do have access in teams to a few things, and I would invite you to take a peek at some of those things, be it, be it the law or the NISBA policy, as well as some of the interviews from other districts where you can hear what students, you know, have, what role, what they describe as their role and how they're functioning. So anyway, and I'm just babbling on because I cannot remember this one thing I had wanted to say, but that's okay.
It's all right.
It's always time. Okay, thank you.
Any other business items? If not, may I have--
I just wanted to mention, which I assume the district either has or will send out to the general public, that the Capital District Vision Zero Initiative is doing a meeting at Pine Hills Branch on February 26th from 4:00 to 7:00. I don't know the full format, but it looks a little bit like an open house format, where you'll be able to sort of come in and out to talk about the, their planning effort around the Albany High traffic safety situation. So that would be wonderful to have lots of people be there to talk about their lived experience. One thing I would like to raise with my Board colleagues is whether we want to have a formal statement on behalf of the Board. I don't, I don't plan to speak as myself because I don't think that's appropriate, even though, as you guys know, I have fairly strong individual opinions about this. I think that we should speak as a Board on this, and I would like to suggest that we work with Mr. Lesko and the Superintendent to write a formal letter into the process. And then if people also want to do individuals, they certainly could do that, but I think it's always, I always use caution for myself as an elected official to make sure that it's clear when I'm speaking as Ann and when I'm speaking representing the Board. So I'm wondering, are people willing to do some kind of letter like that? Is that, you know, subject obviously to it being fine-tuned?
Sounds like a good plan.
All right. Hearing no objection, I will work with Superintendent and Mr. Lesko on some sort of letter. Thanks.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn and return to retreat? Ms. Smith, Ms. Wilson, all in favor? Touch unanimous? Thank you, everybody. Good night.